That exists going into Bosse's.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Um, and seeing that that section of roadway is really quite hazardous.
It is very, even for drivers.
Um, because that little, that little yield triangle they have there for the right tr- turn traffic off of Worley onto Arrow.
Right.
I mean, people, they're just whipping through that. And, you know, if you go there during rush hour traffic and you're trying to make a left-hand turn on to Arrow after you go underneath the thruway, there's no.
Do people actually walk around there?
Well, apparently so.
I don't see one there during rush hour.
There's no sidewalk.
There's no, there's nothing. You can't even, there's no crosswalk, there's no sidewalk, there's nothing.
That's so dangerous.
And it's becoming, you know, more, you know, pedestrian.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not a safe place. It's just not. Um, so, I bring this up because the Traffic and Safety Committee is asking the Board, um, to put together a formal communication to the town of Amherst and the town of Chiefta Waga to open up dialogue about, and of course, it's county as well, to open up dialogue about making this area more pedestrian-friendly.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense. Well, they changed that, they made kind of a loop there, remember, just last year?
Yeah, yeah.
And you're right, people just.
They go, they go through that thing only thirty miles an hour.
I mean, there isn't stop sign there, so they could incorporate a pedestrian crossing, 'cause there's a stoplight there.
There is a stoplight there, but interestingly, you know, there's a lot of traffic turning left onto Arrow off of, off of Garrison.
Right.
Worley, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's no Arrow, and a lot of the times, especially in the morning.
There is no Arrow, it was terrible.
These are buses that are trying to turn left.
There should be an Arrow, I agree.
To get to Bosse's.
Yeah.
And you've got a, you, you can wait for the light to turn three, three times before you get an opportunity to make a left-hand turn.
'Cause that's the route I take to the airport.
Right.
And it's like, do I go, do I wait? Yeah.
Right, right. So, that, that's a.
Who's, who's light would that be?
That would probably be the county or the town of Amherst.
Well, it's likely the town of Amherst.
Right? 'Cause the road, Worley is, Worley is the county. Correct?
No, is it town?
Is Worley the, the town or is that how?
The town, town handles all the lights on Worley.
Or is it their state?
County road.
County road.
It is, the whole thing.
That part really drives the county road.
County road.
But the town does all the lights, because I remember when the lights were synced.
Mm-hmm.
I'd constantly call the town and go, "They're not synced again, they're not synced again, they're not synced again." Because of, at Garrison and Worley, you know, it'd be like two cars would go through and then you'd have to wait.
Yeah.
So I'd have to call the town constantly, and they'd go, "Okay, we're working on it," 'cause they sync all the lights, believe it or not, the town does.
Yeah, they may sync them, but they're not, they're not paying for them.
Right.
So, again.
Yeah.
You know.
That's a good point, though.
I think Erie County does plow and maintain that section of, I believe.
Erie County?
Yeah, not the town, town doesn't plow that section, it's just county.
Maybe, I don't know, if you're meeting with Jeannie?
Yeah.
If you want to bring that up. I know she'll know what we're talking about.
Yeah, we might, you know, that, that would probably be a good, you know, focal point for this conversation, because it is multi-jurisdictional.
No, you think? I think it's, I think it's a good point, especially with no left-turn Arrow, there should be one, and there should be pedestrian crossing. I totally agree with that.
Yeah. It's, it's a very un-people-friendly area in general.
It's very dangerous, yeah.
In general.
Good point, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Kristi Han?
Um, the tree board meets on the twenty-second, Ben has completed the fall planting. Uh, the trees are in front of the, uh, the churches there, St. Peter and Paul's have been redone. Um, so I believe that was the last of the fall planting. Beautification committee had their meeting last Tuesday, it went very well. They're really excited about, um, what the DPW did at, at Garrison Park.
Oh, by moving it?
Yeah, moving that section in, um, so they're getting, uh, jazzed up about that stuff, and they're real excited about the plans for the eighteen-twelve here.
Yeah, so they know what they want to do there?
Yeah, they got it all laid out.
Really? Who does all that?
Uh, well, DPW will be doing it.
Right. And who does the, who does the designing of it, though?
Um, they'll work it all up, Ben.
Yeah?
Yeah. I don't, I, I don't think there's any plans to, like, have a landscape architect or anything like that.
I, I personally think it's beautiful, you know, I mean, I'm jealous, seeing all those flowers there always. I wish my garden looked like that.
Yeah, there's concern around the edges and there's a, um, an unused sprinkler system in there that needs to be taken out or shut off or.
There used to be actually a little waterfall there, too. Did you know that?
Yeah.
Where the bloker stone is?
Where the stone is, yeah.
Yeah, and that's beautiful.
I guess it was a disaster according to.
It never worked, yeah.
Yeah, according to them. Um, so that's going along well. The planning board hit their meeting, everything went very well. And we got a lot of nice projects coming along.
Really?
I guess we do.
Can we hear any? I'd like to know.
Uh, well, what is it? Okay, on the south side of West Spring, what number is that?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-six? I don't remember what.
The woodchuck that?
The woodchuck.
Oh, that's beautiful, yeah.
So that's coming along, so that they got a couple of things to work out.
Right.
Uh, the Cypar building is back on the market.
Right, I heard that.
You're aware of that, yeah.
Is Caloni is back on the market.
I saw that. I took a walk over near the old cleaners there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I still saw the, like, the gas meters on the outside, if you were to.
Yeah, right.
You know?
Yeah, so those will, those will get moved.
Those are going to get moved, yeah. Good idea.
And the man calls for a sidewalk in there, although, geez, there's not a lot of room.
Where are you gonna, where are you gonna walk from? Sidewalk, you walk sideways on.
So that's a work in progress, but I think the, the whole concept of it, I think, is excellent, and when he gets done, it's gonna be a massive improvement.
It's beautiful, nice sight, 'cause he also came to HPC, remember?
Yeah.
No, for the, the woodworking guy.
The old cleaners.
Also came to HPC.
The old cleaners is a different project.
Oh, it is, okay.
This is the, the little mechanic shop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The fellow who had the little repair, mechanic repair shop.
Yeah.
He, he was in there for years.
Yeah.
But it looks, it looks really nice.
Yeah, it's an amazing project, actually.
Oh, no, it's only border pills he came to, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's what it was, he has efficient parking.
I went back to.
It was ZBA, it was ZBA, I'm sorry.
Now, is he going up? Is he going up higher?
No.
No. He's gonna use the existing building, it's just gonna change the exterior.
Yeah.
On the interior, too, but that will still exist.
Structure.
Yeah, and then the front will be, um, his workshop and parking and that. It's very nice. Any other things that, that we, any other projects?
Um.
What is your?
Nothing major.
Okay, good, thank you, yeah.
Um, and then just going back, the WBA meeting is on, on Wednesday. I just wanna go back to the screen update thing.
Yeah.
For the contact sheet, can we add Sophie's name to that?
Sure.
Right, so I don't know if we need to, who printed that one out?
That went over email, yeah.
Yeah, I did this over email.
But I was copying it, so I haven't been getting response.
Yeah, she, exactly.
So I've been copying it.
And then, could we take a bunch of the signs to the meeting on Wednesday?
No, because I hand those out, 'cause they do a photo op.
Okay.
And I'm gonna wait till the holiday is over, because we haven't, you know, we just now started advertising, so I'm gonna give them at least a full week, and a little more for then, 'cause I had, I do a photo op and I thank them, 'cause I have to know where they are, 'cause I collect them again.
So could we get, when they go online, do they fill out a form to get them?
There might be some benefit to handing them out in anticipation of the event, as more businesses start to see other businesses with them.
No.
No, so you, okay. I see what you're saying.
Rather not, no.
Right now, the contact point, like, for signing up, would be to just respond to that email.
You can take this to the meeting, if you like, yeah, definitely, but, um, no, they know, I spoke about it last year.
Like, a little signup form, that they could fill out right then.
Sure.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
And that way, then they could, yeah, and that way, we can keep, keep track as well. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think the more immediate you can make.
Yeah, is that okay?
So that we have it, like, in hand?
Yeah, do you wanna, yeah.
Okay.
Are you pledging? It, it's a pledge form.
Okay.
Yeah. And then you can do one pledge form and pass it around.
Yeah.
And then they can all sign up, and that way, I know, um.
Who's signing up?
Yeah. And the head of the WBA, if he wants to get involved, what's his name?
Stephen.
Stephen, if he wants to get involved, reach out, that'd be great, too. Yeah.
Well, he'll be there.
Yeah.
And, um.
Great.
I think that this is one of those things, if you don't present the opportunity to them, or just say, "Hey, contact us," they'll go back to their office.
Yeah, but they'll may put it up, and then I don't know, you know what I mean?
And forget about it. So we wanna make it as much as we can.
I really wanna, yeah, because right now, I've got the Creekview and Bright Smith and Canal Bank.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and I know they're gonna be very attentive, and when I go there, I just have presented the sign, I talk a little about what they need to do, and then I do a photo op, and I share it with all the other businesses on Facebook, so they know.
And in general, just cleaning up Main Street is, um, it's needed.
I know.
Right, they're doing a lot better job with it, since someone's brought it to their attention, but I think anything we can do to, to strengthen yet.
I totally agree.
And this works out just perfect with it, yeah.
Right, yeah, thanks, Steve, yeah.
Um, I don't have anything on twenty-two ovens, except I say that they.
Somebody did some work on it.
Yeah, they've been cleaning up, and I see the garbage cans.
So I'm not sure who's doing that, though, 'cause I, you know, I was talking to Mark the other day, Friday, too, and I've got that, asking about that.
Why did?
Who was doing that work? They've been ignoring everything, all other previous requests, I'm not sure what's going on.
Could it be the owner?
Maybe, maybe the neighbor, I don't know.
Did you see somebody there, Jeff?
What's that?
Did you see actually somebody?
No, I've just seen the garbage cans brought out and.
Well, we'll take somebody.
Cleaned up their leaves.
Stabilize the porch.
That was us.
So that, okay.
Yeah, that was us.
That was, but I don't know if, maybe there was some paint put on there or something, but anyway.
It's all wrong.
It's just, it's just a little bit better, right?
'Cause I know we also cut the grass last year, because that wasn't done.
Right.
I was trying to find whether lights on.
There were lights on?
I was thinking, oh, that's weird, there's lights on, so maybe there's someone there working on it, who knows?
You know, that, I'm gonna go, if I see that, I will knock on the door and find out.
Cool.
Yeah, great. Or you can, if you see somebody there, Jeff, ask them.
Well, yeah, um, I certainly will, but I was just glad to see the garbage out.
Yeah, cool.
The cans being used, that kind of. Um, sidewalk sale permits, um, I just wanna develop for, not for the restaurants, but for the stores, so that they have a season permit. They're not having to buy a seventy-five-dollar permit every one time they wanna put a table on.
Right.
So, we should be working on that, um, hopefully we'll have something.
Yeah.
By the next meeting.
Mayor Hunt, what was her, I didn't know, she mentioned it.
I think she's fine with it, yeah, we just kinda gotta come up with what, what a charge and what, what a food.
It'll be one table, not multiple tables, things like that.
Yeah, and you gotta be, you can't stick it out into a sidewalk and block the traffic.
Because our, the code enforcement officer will have to inspect it either way, you know, when you put something out in the public right away, you have to see if the tables, right?
Well, it's just like how we would require, say, a, 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 the music on May to give us a diagram, like, uh, barricades, it'd be the same thing for anything that's gonna be out on the sidewalk, too.
So even if winter over coffee?
Even if it's a hand drawn diagram, but just to show us, like, where they're gonna end up putting it, how long is the table, and how far they're gonna.
I think it's a great idea.
You know, it's, when I was in, in, this is just really cute, in Denmark over this fall, people actually put tables out in front of their apartment houses and do like a, a little flea market? And it's all, you know, you put the money and you take what you want, everything is priced, but it's all over the city. Everybody does it. But they put white tablecloths out, and then they put their little, you know, trinkets or clothes or whatever, and people would buy left or right, it's amazing. You know, it's like reuse, rebuy, all that, I loved it, you know?
We should do something with residences.
I know. We had once a flea market on Island Park, where it was just an exchange of items.
Residents.
It was so much fun, you know, giveaway things, and people brought items, and neighbors could come and choose what they wanted and take it, nothing was for sale. It was just a swap type thing.
The Lamp Post is having a rummage sale this June, so if anybody's feeling inclined to clean out a basement and donate their things, we'll have one of those donations.
Well, that's a good idea. Thank you.
In support of veterans.
Oh, I like that. Can you get the date for that, don't you?
It's June twelfth, if I'm not mistaken.
Really? Did you hear that Lamp Post is doing a rummage sale for veterans? I like that. The one right here on Worley, right?
Yes, post six to June, I'm sorry, it's Saturday, June fourteenth.
June fourteenth? 'Cause I have things. I like that, thank you.
To donate?
Yep.
Good, that completes my report.
Thank you, Kristi Han. Eepus, trustee Jackson?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, arts, culture, excuse me, and diversity have, I've been saying this every meeting, um, but it's next week now.
Is it?
Right, or is it the week after? It's April twenty-fifth, Jazz and Poetry.
Is that next week or what? Week after next, right.
Yeah.
Is it the, that's the women's year?
So it's a week from Friday, so a week from this Friday, so April twenty-fifth at seven o'clock, Jazz and Poetry. With the Ladies First Jazz at the Meeting House, it's a free event from seven to nine, it sounds like it's gonna be excellent. They're, they're very good, I, I've seen the Ladies First Jazz perform before, and so, come on out. Meeting House, Hark's Committee changed their meeting, they would've met this week, but they're gonna meet, um, April twenty-second at seven o'clock, and that's at South Lawn Park, weather permitting. So a good thing it's not tomorrow, because tomorrow's supposed to be snowing in the evening, and, yeah, so.
Really, so they're meeting at South Lawn Park?
They're meeting at South Lawn, they wanna do a walkthrough of the park and just figure out where, you know, if they're getting a chess table and things, you know, just checking out the layout of the park, where it stands after a sprint, you know, during, whatever. What, what work might need to be done, and, uh, that's pretty much all I have.
You know, do you wanna mention, are you, Sue, are we looking into this chess table?
Yeah.
Because Glen Park is also interested in procuring one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so sometimes.
'Cause those are more, if I have to get quotes on those.
Yeah, exactly, but I'm saying, sometimes if you order more than one, you know, they give you a better deal, so they're also interested, because there are a lot of people who sit around the pavilion, and I've seen them actually bring their own little chess thing, and, you know, if we could do that, add it around there.
I, you know, that to done.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you get quotes, then we can add that.
And I asked them that question.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I can, we can all just quote for things, so.
I think it's cool, cool chess team, I love it, or checkers, checker and chess. All right, um, that's it, so department head reports, village attorney, anything? No, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll do that. So we have nothing else, and DP?
I just have one announcement on staff, which is that we just hired a new VP, I'm really who's gonna start on the twenty-second.
Yes.
Let me get back from Easter break.
Does anybody have any questions on the agenda? You always forget to ask that. Are we good there?
I'm pretty sure it's all working.
Yeah, first, first, we do have to go into executive session, we can do that now, right?
Yeah. Makes sense, correct.
So, do I have to make a motion to go?
Yep, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
For litigation, for possible litigation?
Pending.
For pending litigation. Do you second it?
I do.
Okay, all papers?
Aye.
So we're gonna go into executive session, and we'll be back, we'll have a five-minute break, and then be back at seven thirty. Thank you.
I'm carrying the t-shirts, pardon? I'm carrying or just handing the t-shirts out? I was, wanted to ask.
No, we got, um, I took, I, it's from, um, the environmental budget, so, isn't that great? I'm so excited. You know, people like to have shirts when they work.
You did a nice job decorating your site.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I did, I did make that.
How many are you going to have?
Well, I made fifty of them, so.
Fifty?
We had enough for fifty, for fifty businesses.
Twenty-six?
You know, I got to know him because I was seeing my work on the.
Thanks, Floyd, it's the word saying, yeah.
Well, each family had their export program, so that's sixteen for them. Where do they put the shoes and that?
You can help me in a second.
This is right now. That ends on here, that's right. I usually do it anyways.
What do you mean, remember that? Oh, we missed, uh, we missed the, yeah, what's his name was playing? Sheffield, right? There, right, yeah? I'm trying. Trouble, you know, he's getting in trouble. Where's your friend? Meredith?
Oh, she's at home, watching TV.
Yeah, I just wanna. I gotta go to, uh, Abbey Square. You and him and. They were just talking about that period, Jeff. Huh?
About Abbey Square, yeah?
No, about the, um. Crossing and, um, you know, just the safety and, all, all the traffic down there, it's, um. You got the town, and you got the Chiefta Waga, and you got the village.
Who's having inflation down on St. Michael's? Well, guys, I'm, I'm gonna say, we'll have to cover this, I was, I was last to cover it.
Well, I guess it'll always cover my tail, because they want to fire that guy to put his name. Yeah, we're, we're gonna try and be, uh, can't, oh, I wanna take a clean one, and it is.
Okay, perfect.
Hopefully, hopefully it's all right.
Well, if not, they'll pick it back.
Are you on the agenda? No, no. In fact, I just found out, I'm right here, they already asked the whole thing for the permits. Oh, good for you. So that's all done, huh? Yeah. Orchestrated. Yeah, kind of. You do your homework.
I know, you know, what's involved, um, yeah, we might have to make some doorways.
When do you start? Uh, June, June, we can do, do six, six.
Five or six is one of those two. As long as they have one.
That's it, that's it, my friend, yeah, I don't have to stick around.
You're hungry downstairs.
We missed you, uh, on Saturday, yeah, yeah, no, on Friday, yeah. He's gonna be there next week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to make it through that.
Trying to.
See a nice crowd for you.
There you go, yeah.
Fair, yeah. If he doesn't get enough, we'll, we'll be taking people.
You're on, you're on the agenda?
It's gonna be easier if we just dump them off someplace.
You don't have to worry about what we need to do.
Are you feeling bad? Were you guys, I think you were in, in, what was it, um, seventy-eight, I don't know.
Sorry, seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, yeah. They were, off a tour, everybody placed, everybody, other parish, what, or, or, I don't know. They were there for about a week and a half, speaking of daily question.
Mm-hmm.
Have you, do you know who the parade chair is this year?
No. Perfect.
One of yours.
Oh, that'll be nice.
I hope so. No, I'm.
I have, I have this contact in my phone.
Sure, I mean, you know, you've got around one enough, and, so hopefully, not gonna let, uh, Google do something.
Hopefully, might.
They'll be able to answer that question really quick.
Hopefully, he keeps. They've always made great lists, and they're putting us, you know, basically right in front, so we can get back in service quick.
It'll be, it'll be the cops, it'll be the, you know, probably the villagers, and then.
Yeah, that's what it has been with past trips, and that's fine, but, you know, the fire department's left a bad taste in John's mouth, so we, we may be towards a career ahead, I don't know.
I, I don't even wanna think about it. Jeff doesn't have to decide a vote, Jeff's the judge. Murray's still in.
Funny thinking, now, probably if we had a litmus test a couple, couple months ago, and, and Sue's myself and Alex are alive, if you have the two of us, go, hey, what does it do, would you can spectate them on the patient, and, 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 like? So that's why I, I think we're gonna be doing one, or something, I can, yeah. What do you think, if you want, like, Sue's myself and Alex are, well, walking on the scene, he went up in front of the two of us, and said, hey, what does it do, would you can, would you can?
I would say he's upset, but he still did.
Spectate the ambulance, people walking in there?
He didn't get a great story. Just put the X next to my name, this is my name, yeah, so. He, he doesn't.
Sorry, they got that one sitting with the wrong set.
Something great for to, yeah.
Yes, you're probably right.
All set to a point. Forget it. They're gonna be there, uh, Tuesday night, six to eleven, probably there, uh, Friday night, uh, six to eleven.
Okay.
And they cannot put a in-service car due to the congestion, but they said that they'll be putting it close by.
Correct.
So one of their, one of their, uh, where they, they tend to, um, have cars when, when their in-service is down at the Walker Center, so they'll be just down the street.
That's right, um, yeah, 'cause they, to, to have one on-site is what it's gonna cost. They're just gonna have one in the, they're gonna have one in the, in the area, which, which is why we need you to make a request.
Yeah, he said that they're, they'll do the best that they can to keep one close by.
So we can ask, right? As we make an effort, that's all we can do.
Yeah, so.
What about, uh, what about during the day?
Uh, yeah, during the day, they do the same thing, they'll try and keep something, something that, uh, they call that post whiskey. Uh, they'll try and keep, uh, they'll try and keep a truck there, um, but, yeah, it all depends how busy they are, and, uh.
What about, what about first aid here?
Uh, first aid here, uh, we're gonna be starting our crews probably about four or five.
Okay, so, so the mayor was concerned about during the day?
Yeah, during the, during the day, make it guys, you may not, um.
Depends on what schedule.
We do have, yeah, a lot, it depends on work schedules. We do have some retired guys that may be able to get up here, but I can't guarantee we'll be, so we'll make a, I'll make a request, and that's.
Okay.
That's what I can do.
Yeah, just let her know, 'cause she's the one who's concerned.
Yeah, but even, even if you call nine-one-one, we're mental.
Right? I'm good.
There was, I think, I think the more of the concern was with the, you know, the, the kid that gets with bee sting in there, there's nobody around now.
Uh, well, yeah, we can, uh, we'll be at County Island, and also be at, um, the, I believe the police, uh, have bee sting, I mean, we could drive off bee sting stuff.
I know last year, they said they knocked on the door here.
Yeah.
But you do what you can do, and.
Right.
It's all, it's all we can do. Were you off today, David?
No, I had a walk till four.
Oh, I was gonna say, you're not usually here early, this is nice.
I don't, I saw the thing about the African safety memo, I was, oh, my neighbor's the one heavily fought on that.
Yeah. Aren't that many people walking the road, Worley and Arrow?
No, not really.
It's, there's like, there's like two houses and everything else is industrial there.
It's Georgia primarily.
Yeah.
People do walk, you know.
Yeah, it's, I can't, they're, they're gonna park on the side of the road, there's, I, they, it's.
And, um, I mean, Harkness is down the road, but.
Those kids aren't walking.
Yeah, nobody, nobody.
Show the kid that walks to school.
Not to Harkness, not to Harkness.
Yeah, especially they come forward, they're, they're helping.
Yeah.
Not to Harkness, no.
Yeah, most of the kids that go to Harkness usually get busted here.
Sure.
I think it's more the Georgia's code is all flowing.
Yeah, but nobody really crosses there, I've never seen anybody waiting in line.
Yeah, they're usually parked, I've parked on the side, on the side.
I haven't been to a bar, and I haven't.
You know, then if that's gonna be an issue, then maybe they should buy a part of that parking lot from the vintage place. And, and contract with that vintage place to, to use their parking lot. That place is, if it's ever open, it's never busy, you know?
Right.
And so, like his, that guy is a drunk. But that, but that could be a, uh, the partners. Yeah, that could be, that, that could be a, the, that, that vendor, that owner, that, that place, that could be a source of revenue for him to rent the parking lot out for a annual fee. You know, he only has to do it on a, on a Saturday and a Sunday, 'cause Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Georgia's isn't that busy, they have enough parking to handle that. And it's usually, and at Georgia's, it's usually only in the morning.
Yes.
Or in the, or just, or right after lunch.
Yeah.
Oh, isn't that fun, where's your, like, county or N F D A, we sell that?
It's posted by N F D A. It's, the, the corners, yeah, the corners, but there's still that parking lot where that vintage store is.
I do a good at the left, Tony, you know?
Uh-oh, see you guys. Have fun. Time to go on the ladder for him?
I'd, I'd like to mention something to you, um, because it takes some doing, I, I, uh, mention this to Basil Piazza, my, my mother was the one that restarted the old home base. And, um, it was, uh, it started as, uh, well, it started in the wakement, because all the kids left the town, and they went west, and they'd come back and be with their families and the kids that they grew up with, that they hadn't seen for five years. Um, and, but the suggestion is, um, um, and it was for classmates to get together, I, now if I see, um, someone that I graduated from high school, uh, with, I, I don't even know who the hell they are. But, um, the suggestion is that, um, I mean, really, you guys, as far as, um, uh, the beer tent and the carnival ride technology, um, you know, um, uh, this, this is where Basil, um, you know, got started the thing. Um, the suggestion is that the, um, um, the, uh, ride technology be put up on, um, Main Street, so that it's more of a, a social, you know, get together with your friends and relatives.
How do we put on Main Street?
Well, well, now, this is, this is the thing, that, um, the carnival ride technology would be up on Main Street on one side, I mean, other side, the traffic, the, uh, police would, uh, manage it in the two ways.
If we can. So, so, so the, so the issue with that is that Main Street itself is a state road.
Right, oh, right, right, right.
So you have to, you have to get permission from the state, and the state's never even gonna, 'cause it's a main thoroughfare. Kathy local writes you letters, if you can get her attention, right?
How'd you know?
I heard you talking through the past, I listened to you. Yeah, so, so, that's, I mean, that's without, you'd have to, you'd have to totally shut down Main Street to do something like that.
Uh, well.
Because their rides are too big.
Well, um, uh, you know, they could go partially, you know, as far as they, each one is different.
Yeah, but who's gonna?
As far as the rides on the, the street.
But as far as?
Yeah, it could be up all the way.
But as, as far as, as far as the businesses go, who's gonna give up their frontage to do that?
Uh, well, it's a part of the, the old home base.
Well, no, no, I understand, I understand, I understand.
The business system, the village, all the town, all the.
Think about, think about, think about Main Street itself, the only, the only, the only buildings with green space in front of them are these, are this building?
Right, 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 right.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to step forward and speak? Please state your name and if you're a village resident. And if you're a village resident. Joe Stoltteri, I am a village resident.
I haven't been here in a few months and I had to come back here again. Trustee Han probably knows a little bit because he observed what happened about two weeks or so ago. I'm still having a problem with parking on my street and about two weeks or so ago I had a delivery made and I knew this delivery was coming for about three weeks or so and I, long story short, the truck came. It was coming from halfway across the street and it was a rather large truck and there were cars parked all over on Rhinewald again. And the truck had nowhere to go, so the truck pulled into the parking lot of the yoga studio and next thing you know here comes the owner and she says get off my property or I'm going to charge you with trespassing and then she called the police and whatever. And the truck had a difficult time maneuvering out of there because there were cars all over the place. So this situation isn't going away. I've got another delivery coming either on Friday or Saturday. So we got to come up with a plan.
It's a police matter, you know that. It's a police matter. It's a police matter.
It's not a police matter.
It is because it's a public street, Joe, and anybody can park on a public street.
That's, but we're talking about something to be done about regulating and restricting parking on the street because I can't even service my house.
We can't do that.
Yes, you can. There's other examples of it throughout the village. You just don't want to do it.
Can the truck actually get through the driveway?
He could barely, one of trustee Han's employees had to move his car so that the truck could then back in. But I don't think it's right that this large truck has to, what's that?
She asked me really did someone have to move and I said yes, Evan did.
Yeah.
I know Evan.
He had to move his car. He had to move his car.
Well, that was good though, thank you.
So we need to come up with a plan here about what can be done so that we can have safety and services done on our street. The street cleaner can't clean a clean street.
Well, if you know that a truck is delivering certain goods to your home, perhaps I may suggest that you go to the business and alert them.
No, I'm not going to, why should I have to do that?
Because you're receiving the delivery. And alert them that a truck is going to be there at a certain time.
Maybe you could shed some light on this. If I put pylons out there Friday morning or Saturday morning, okay, is that, is that okay to do that?
No, it's a public street.
What's the truck supposed to do then?
Why don't you move your car into the street and save the spot?
I've done that before, but there's only so much I can do.
That sounds like a good solution.
Well, if one car had to move, then your car could have gone there and you could have done the same thing.
There was one car in the parking lot while this was going on. They use their street like a parking lot.
The parking lot and the street are two separate things. We don't have any jurisdiction over the parking lot.
But you have jurisdiction as far as restricting parking on the street to say two hours.
Yes, we do. We've evaluated your situation and we're not going to change it at this point in time.
Why not?
Because we've decided not to.
On what basis?
On the basis that we don't feel it's necessary.
You don't feel it's necessary?
I'm not going to argue with you about it, but I'm telling you what the decision has been and that's the way it is.
Three minutes are up, thank you very much.
You worry more about recycling pumpkins than you do about doing what you're supposed to do.
Okay, thank you.
Your time is up now.
Thank you.
One more thing I want to bring up about the, no, 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 this is important because the police were involved in this. A no parking sign was put up at the corner to the first apron. The problem is, is that there's about six feet where they put the sign from the end of the sign to the apron. So somebody parked there illegally. The police came to ticket and he says I can't ticket that car because part of the nose of the car is an illegal part of the parking.
This is, yeah, this isn't, this is not, you can go to the Amherst Police Department and.
But you're failing to make policy decisions that are effective.
No, no, okay, thank you, your three minutes are up, thank you. Thank you.
Really, I mean your pumpkin garbage is just garbage.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? I make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no proclamations tonight. We do have a public hearing and it is on our tentative budget for the fiscal year 2025-26. So I make a motion to open the public hearing for the Village of Williamsville fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget. All in favor?
Aye.
If anybody has anything to say, please come forward. You have three minutes. Okay, I make a motion to close the hearing for the.
Tentative budget.
For the budget hearing, for the proposed, the tentative budget hearing.
I will second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, village board, let's see what is next. Oh, reports and resolutions, correct? Is that it? Yeah, thank you. So I do have one report that's very important to me and it's not involving pumpkins. We do have the green up Williamsville and I love my park day on May 3rd. So we're looking for interested volunteers who want to either help clean up some of their local parks or work on our bioswells on Spring Street. You can reach out to me or our community aide Ms. Gephardt and volunteer your time. And we're meeting here on Saturday the 3rd at 9:30 for the litter pickup. It'll be the rear parking lot and to work on the bioswells, we're meeting at 10:00 a.m. at the mill, the water mill at Spring Street and we'll have Alexander Zirkle there explaining what the bioswells do and how you can actually, anything we use at the bioswells, you can actually take back to your own yard and use them as well, the ideas. So everybody's welcome. That's what I have for my report. Oh, one more report, one more. We are, the village will be closed on Easter Monday in observance of Easter, which is April 21st. And I do wish everybody who celebrates a happy Easter and a happy Passover. Thank you. Now I do have resolutions. The first one is make a motion, resolve that the following budget transfers are hereby made in the general fund for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May, number two.
and, and next thing you know, here comes the owner and, you know, she says, get off my property or I'm going to charge you with trespassing and then she called the police and whatever. And the truck had a difficult time maneuvering out of there because there were cars all over the place. So this situation isn't going away. I've got another delivery coming either on Friday or Saturday, okay? So we got to come up-
It's a police matter. You know that. It's a police matter.
I, I didn't hear what you said.
It's a police matter.
It's not a police matter.
It is because it's a public street, Joe, and anybody can park on a public street.
That's, but we're talking about something to be done about regulating and restricting parking on the street because I can't even service my house.
We can't do that.
Yes, you can. There's other examples of it throughout the village. You just don't want to do it.
Can the truck pull in your driveway? Can the truck actually get to your driveway?
He couldn't, he could barely, I, one of, one of Trustee Han's employees had to move his car so that the truck could then back in. But I don't think it's right that this large truck has to, what's that?
She asked me, really, did someone have to move? And I said, yes, Evan did.
Yeah.
She knows.
I know Evan.
He had to move his car. He had to move his car.
Well, that was good though. Thank you.
So we need to come up with a plan here about what can be done so that we can have safety and services done on our street. The street cleaner can't clean a clean street.
Well, if you know that a truck is delivering certain goods to your home, perhaps I may suggest that you go to the business and alert them-
No, I'm not going to, why should I have to do that?
Because you're receiving the delivery. And alert them that a truck is going to be there to a certain time.
Maybe you could shed some light on this.
No.
If I put pylons out there Friday morning or Saturday morning, okay, is it, is that okay to do that?
No. It's a public street.
What's the truck supposed to do then?
Why don't you move your car into the street and save the spot?
I, I've done that before, but there's only someone I can do.
That sounds like a good solution.
Well, that, if one car had to move, then your car could have gone there and you could have done the same thing.
But there were no cars, there was one car in the parking lot while this was going on. They, you wear a street, like a parking lot.
The parking lot and the street are two separate things. We, we, we don't have any jurisdiction over the parking lot.
But you have jurisdiction as far as restricting parking on the street to say two hours.
Yes, we do. And we've evaluated your situation and we're not going to change it at this point in time.
Why not?
Because we've decided not to.
On what basis?
On the basis that we don't feel it's necessary.
You don't feel it's necessary?
I'm not going to argue with you about it, but I'm telling you what the decision has been and that's the way it is.
Okay. Three minutes are up. Thank you very much.
It seems like you agree more about recycling pumpkins than you do about doing what you're supposed to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Your time is up now.
Thank you.
One more thing I want to bring up about-
Your time is up.
No, no, no. This is important because the police were involved in this. A no parking sign was put up at the corner to the first apron. The problem is, is that there's about six feet where they put the sign from the end of the sign to the apron. So somebody parked there illegally. The police came to tick it and he says, I can't ticket that car because part of the nose of the car is an illegal part of the parking.
Listen, this is a public-
This is, yeah, this isn't, this is not, you can go to the Amherst Police Department and-
But you're failing to make policy decisions that are affecting people.
No, no. Okay. Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you. Thank you.
Really, I mean, your pumpkin garbage is just garbage.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? I make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no proclamations tonight. We do have a public hearing and it is on our tentative budget for the fiscal year 2025-26. So I make a motion to open the public hearing for the Village of Williamsville fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If anybody has anything to say, please come forward. You have three minutes. No? Okay. I make a motion to close the hearing for the-
Tentative budget.
For the budget hearing, for the proposed, the tentative budget hearing.
I will second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Village Board, let's see what is next. Oh, reports and resolutions, correct? Is that it? Yeah. Thank you. So I do have one report that's very important to me and it's not involving pumpkins. We do have the green up Williamsville and I love my park day on May 3rd, so we're looking for interested volunteers who want to either help clean up some of their local parks or work on our bioswells on Spring Street. You can reach out to me or our community aide, Ms. Gephardt, and volunteer your time. And we're meeting here on Saturday, the 3rd at 9:30 for the litter pickup. It'll be the rear parking lot. And to work on the bioswells, we're meeting at 10:00 a.m. at the mill, the water mill at Spring Street and we'll have Alexander Zirkle there explaining what the bioswells do and how you can actually, anything we use at the bioswells, you can actually take back to your own yard and use them as well, the ideas. So everybody's welcome. That's what I have for my report. Oh, one more report, one more. We are, the village will be closed on Easter Monday in observance of Easter, which is April 21st, and I do wish everybody who celebrates a happy Easter and a happy Passover. Thank you. Now I do have resolutions. The first one is make a motion, resolve that the following budget transfers are hereby made in the general fund for the 2024-2025 fiscal year as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May, number two, may resolve that the following budget transfers are hereby made in the Glen Park Fund for the 24-25 fiscal year as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, may resolve that the payroll and vouchers in the amount of $136,212.11 covering the period from March 24-25 through April 10-25 are hereby approved as swallow, as follows as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number four, be resolved that the following persons are hereby appointed election inspectors for the election of the, it's not a special election, it's just an election, of the Village of Williamsville to be held on Tuesday, June 17, 2024, at the rate of $150 each for the day to be paid by the Village of Williamsville. The following people are, this will take place at the auditorium, 5565 Main Street, right here where we're sitting, and the following people are Kevin Cronin, Albert Reinhardt, Patricia Reinhardt, Joan Jennings-Galofani. Be it further resolved that the following person to hereby appoint it as alternate election inspector is Lori Berry and be it further resolved that Albert Reinhardt is hereby appointed chairperson of the election inspectors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five, be resolved to approve consultant fees for Alexandra Zirkle for professional redesign and planting in the village bioswells in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last, be resolved that Terry Sherman is hereby appointed as interim deputy treasurer effective April 22, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And welcome, Ms. Sherman. Thank you. Next is Trustee Celeste, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't have reports beyond what was covered in the work session, but I do have one resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. Be it resolved that the local law, number three of 2025, is hereby adopted.
All in, oh, second? I'll second it.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Trustee Celeste. Trustee Han?
No further reports except to say, is the police officer still here?
Oh, there he is. Hello.
Thank you and also thank the police department. I saw some sort of traffic ticket being issued on Friday night, so, and it was, it was good to see that. Okay. And if you can, please relay that to your superiors. I'd appreciate that as well. And thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
So no further reports and I have no resolutions, including none on chicken coops.
Okay. Not this time. It's for next time, right? Yeah. Thank you, Trustee Han. Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have nothing further to report than what was in work session and I have one resolution. Be it resolved that Paulette, how do you say that?
What's her name?
Jaquiel.
Jaquiel, I think.
Jaquiel is hereby appointed to the Glen Park Joint Board until the end of the 2024-2025 official village year.
Yay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any staff reports?
No, I'm good.
All good. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I make a motion to close the village board meeting for tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yay. Hey, look at the time it is. Thank you for coming, everyone. Thank you, Jaclyn. It was very sort of-